Thank you Pam.
All right.
Next will be Mr. Eric Lowstein, Extension Office Director.
Good morning Commissioners, I do not have anything extra for you this morning.
Anything from the board for Mr. Eric concerning his written report? Thank you Eric.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Next will be bid opening, RFP.
We've got two bids to open first, it's from the Ellis County League project. That's going to be 4.59 miles of resurfacing, striping, science, grassing along Ellis County.
This is from Roberts and Roberts. Roberts and Roberts on the Ellis County League. Tunnel base bid is 152,000, 145. 152, 145.
Roberts and Roberts.
Roberts and Roberts. The next one is Piagot Asphalt out of Crawfordville. Piagot Asphalt, P-I-G-O-T-T, out of Crawfordville. The base bid is handwritten, it's 194,892 and 80 cents. 194, 892 and 80 cents. Third bid is from North Florida Construction out of Clarksville, Florida. North Florida Construction. Tunnel base bid, 198, 898, 50 cents. 198, 898, 50 cents. Last one is CW Roberts. The base bid is 140,415 and 85 cents. 140,415 and 85 cents. And I recommend we turn this over to the...
Pro Rish.
Pro Rish.
I make a motion that we turn this over to Pro Rish.
Second.
By Commissioner Lockes, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion? Need to consider past performance when evaluating these bids? Can pass that message on to Pro Rish or whoever's looking at it?
Yes sir.
Because there have been some issues with some of the contractors and some of their past performance?
Yes.
I'd like that to be considered.
I sure will, sure. Next, oh go ahead. Well the next one is, and this is something that the board's interested in, this is the RFQ. There's no money involved in this thing. It's a request for call occasions for the fixed base operator. As you know, we had a five-year contract with Crystal Air. Five years is going to run out in November and so we are at the timeline to accept review proposals. And Crystal Air may in fact reapply, I don't know who's in there, but this is an opportunity for the board through its airport manager and committee to review fixed base operators for another, I believe it's another five-year period, but I'm not positive.
That is Crystal Air?
Okay, so we, the applicants are, I'll just open them up, even though there is not any dollar amount here, you're looking for a qualified firm that your airport manager would then negotiate with. Just to show that there is a... So Crystal Air did submit. There's a number of things that they were asked to describe, so Crystal Air has an application in here.
One. The other Centric.
Another one is called Centric Aviation and it apparently is out of Lumberton, New Jersey.
What was that name again?
Centric, C-E-N-T-R-I-C. Centric Aviation, out of New Jersey. They sent in a document here.
New Jersey.
New Jersey is where the address is on this. I'm looking at it for the first time, they may or may not have FBOs closer than that, but this app, this address is New Jersey.
Over to the headquarters.
Yeah. That's it, that's two of them, I'll figure those two out.
And so, pass these on to, I guess we need a motion, pass them on to the airport manager, he's going to meet with the AAC this afternoon, they need to go and discuss these and review.
I'll make that motion that we pass down to the...
I have a motion for, by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Where is Crystal Air located?
Well they have an FBO here and then they have, they have, they, I believe it's in, where else should it be? South Carolina?
Yes, I was going to say.
North Carolina.
South Carolina.
Nashville.
Chattanooga, Tennessee. My bad.
Neither one of you are right. Now Dee, Dee going with two?
It's only two. Advertised in the manner that Jason, probably your airport manager thought was adequate and you know, worthwhile. I don't know where he put the ads out, it was more than just a local paper, I can tell you that, but whether it was an FBO website or something else, I don't know yet.
He did put numerous airline trades, what he told me, and I myself advertised Alhaz Democrat, Panama City Herald, and of course a local newspaper anyway. Did that a couple of times, a few times during the last couple of months. But it's been out there.
And the challenge is, and you all know this, is that we have a big airport out there, we expect the FBO to help maintain that airport, and that is sometimes out of sync with how other FBOs operate. So it's a challenge to get somebody who's willing to put the effort in to maintain the airport, considering how big it is and the rest of the street is. But we'll see what the, what the airport committee looks at these as.
Is it possible that they readvertise Alan and see if they can get additional?
Well you're on your timeline, it's something that's going to have to happen in November either you...
Okay, contract runs out November.
Yeah, so it's possible tonight that they decide to extend for some period, I mean I don't know what they'll do, but yes, that's certainly an option, but we have to make some action because the contract extends and expires.
Commissioner, can I give some input? I want to Steve Kirk.
Oh don't say it. You have to be recognized before you step into the podium and start speaking.
Okay.
We're trying to discuss something here right now.
I was going to recommend one more thing, thing Commissioner, is that maybe we talk to Crystal Air, maybe extend a month to month, and then Jason will be here at the next meeting and talk to him and see about the possibility of extending that month to month and readvertising, see how he feels about that. Maybe changing the advertisement might help, because I think like what Alan said, I think that one of the kickers is that maintenance. Most FBOs are running away from having to maintain that airport that cut all the grass. That might be one of the problems. So I think it's a conversation we can have with Jason, you know, at the next meeting, and maybe ask Crystal Air to go month to month for a few months.
I mean I was just asking a question, you know.
Why?
With only two companies, I'm saying, you know, it depends on what ACC recommendation is and airport manager's recommendation is. I understand, I was just bringing that up, that only two companies apply, and that's not really a big pool to choose from, but I mean that's such a...
It's not much smaller than the pool we had five years ago, we might have had, we might have had three of them, it's just hard to get people to come to rural airports, especially when you've got to maintain them.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
One thing I do want to say is just what you said Alan, we want to make sure that we get this ahead of the ball, that we don't get in the condition that we did a few years back with airport, and we want to make sure that we keep it going and, and make sure we have somebody that operates it and there to get the fuel out and do all that, because we sure don't want that to happen again.
That's correct.
Between FBOs. Aaron, I really get FBOs.
Ted was pumping gas night and day.
Any other Commissioner comment for recognizing general that voted? Go ahead, so I'll speak to Shannon for the record.
My name is Steve Kirk, and I sit on the Airport Advisory Committee, I'm a member of, I'm a resident of the county. My background is I've dealt with the FAA, Flight Standards District Office, I've produced air shows, I've secured military aircraft for museums, and I worked in land planning with my own municipality on a closed military base. This airport, the county needs to stop looking at this airport as a liability and look at it as a job creator. It's the most incredible asset that this community has, and as an outsider residing in Franklin County now for four years, I see that there's enough jobs here for half the people, and the other half the people need insurance, gas, and a car to get out, and where they got the money? We can get unlimited amounts of state DOT money put into this, we have $5 million coming in the next three years into the site from the state. The feds want to put in money, and right now it's not being run correctly, and the right FBO could turn this into, with the right airport management and with the right advisory committee, we can bring in educational facilities, we could bring in an aviation museum. I worked very closely with North Rock Roman and Lockheed Martin with their logistics divisions to try to bring jobs into our town, and we could, this could be the pot of gold for Franklin County. When the DOT is on the phone with me and they're telling me 100% grant money for capital improvement projects at that airport because we're in a red rural zone, that's incredible. When I was up north it was 90%, and the municipality had to pay the other 10%. I suggest we continue looking at FBOs, but the hardest thing for us to do as a committee and us as a municipality is to get somebody in there to pass the liability. We shouldn't be looking to pass the liability and say, hey you do all the stuff that the town's supposed to do. We should own up and take some of this grant money and some of this income from these FBOs and put it into a fund so that we can put money back into this airport, and that would be the greatest job generated this county has ever seen, and potentially it can replace what's happening with the seafood industry. And myself, as an airport advisory committee member, want to see the right thing happen here, and later on in the meeting you've got somebody who's incredibly qualified that wants to be a member of this committee. And that's all I have to say Commissioners, but the FBO that's outfitted out in New Jersey, I think may be an answer to our prayers. It's really hard to get somebody to come in and say, you're taking care of the runways, you're doing the deforestation, you're taking care of the hangars, you're taking care of lease agreements, a lot of that stuff, we should be looking at that airport. How's it going to make Franklin County money? Not how are we going to pass off the liability? And thank you very much for listening to me. I'll be back later.
Next on the agenda will be Mr. Bobby Miller requests. Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Morning Commissioners, my name's Bobby Miller. The following discussion will be about regarding the existing height regulations. Before I get into that, I'd like to say, I really, on behalf of the citizens of the county, we really appreciate the board taking a proactive approach towards our height limits and really standing by, sticking to your guns on this thing and making it a reality and not letting people cheat and pledge and move up on these. That, that's important. It's important to the county, it's important to the citizens of the county, and equally is important to the people that don't live here, that have properties here, that pay huge tax revenues to have properties here. They really want to see it stay like it is, we really don't want to turn into a Dustin or Fort Walton Beach type area. Let's give our children, our grandchildren, an opportunity to make those decisions. And I'll have to say, this is not the board that I'm worried about at all. You five people up there as well, if you could stay there for, for now and forever, that would be great, I wouldn't be here today. But the reality of it is, somebody else will soon fill, will sooner or later fill those seats, and that's where, what I'm worried about. And that's why I would like to give the citizens of the community an opportunity to have some say-so in the matter. What I'm requesting would, I'd like to gain the support of the commission to enact an ordinance that would require anyone, including the Commissioners, who would like to obtain a variance or change the existing height regulations in any way to first, at the petitioner's expense, obtain a 75% majority vote by the registered voters of the county, Franklin County. The 75% would be of the citizens who vote, not of 75% of the citizens who are registered. I would like for this to be what I call a live vote, not a mail-in ballot style vote. In other words, it would be like a normal vote, absentee ballots of course would still be allowed, but it wouldn't be a straight mail-in ballot type thing. You would actually go to the polls to vote on this. I'm also requesting that this action be included in the county's comprehensive plan at the first opportunity through a comp plan update or an amendment to the comp plan. Do we have any questions?
Down at the volume says common state government supermajority, what does that apply to?
I looked that up to see what was acceptable throughout, you know, what the state normally did for accepted standards, and those are the accepted standards that the state accepts, the standards for criteria to meet these obligations, and I picked of course the one that was the most stringent. For example, you have to have a 60% majority, a 60% rule to, and to put something on the, what was that, to change the state government, to enact a...
Amendment to the constitution.
Amendment to the constitution requires 60%, some of them require 66% or three-fifths. I would say let's go with the 75%. The whole objective of this is to, to give the people a, by the app, so to speak, give us a chance to, to determine what we want our county to look like. We, we kind of basically know right now, the people, the citizens, know what they want it to look like. I've had responses, over 400 responses on one post on social media, and not one person that replied on that or that checked like or disliked, disliked it. They want to keep it status quo like it is, we don't want to be come on that high-rise city. And I think if we can do this, our county will actually become more valuable than, than those around us.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I ask Mr. Miller a question? Bobby?
Yes.
Is it my understanding that you're going to try to go through the two municipalities in the county also?
I've already been to the city of Apalachicola and they're working on this right now as we speak. This is not really a brand-new thing, it's something I've looked at for a long time, and I made my decision really basically when I went right out on Panama City Beach a while back. I just, I just looked at what they have and I come back and I look at our skyline, and our skyline is trees, and, and so I went to the, to the Apalachicola City Commission and they endorsed it unanimously, and they have their attorney working on it. And I also asked your attorney, the county attorney, Mr. Schuler, and I also asked Mr. Floyd, who is the city attorney, if they could get together and work on this and kind of work together on it, so we're kind of in unison throughout the county. I also called the Carabel, talked to the Carabel mayor, Mr. Lopez, but as I told her, I don't make decisions for Carabel, I don't live in Carabel, and she said she would be looking closely at what the county does, and you know, they'll, they'll have to make that decision. I will put out a plea to Carabel to let's make this thing 100% Franklin County.
Yeah.
But there again, I stress, I don't, we don't, I don't live in Carabel and I don't try to run their government over there.
Well, Mr. Miller, before last meeting you gave me the piece of paper that you wanted to, to look at, and during the meeting I handed it to the attorney, and, and I can tell you, I support you 100%.
Well, I appreciate it.
That's the one thing that I am proud of in this county, among anything, that you can drive all 60, 70 something miles of this county and see the water. That's what makes us unique. And you know, it's like you said, you're not worried about the fellows that's on this board now, it's the ones to come.
That's correct.
That don't know the history, don't have the institutional knowledge. We've worked mighty hard, and Alan Pierce was one of them, that worked hard to keep the height restriction, is what it is, and I have to say I can support you 100%.
Well I appreciate that, and, and you having said that, I know for a fact that you are very passionate about our county. I remember one time there was a Grassy Initiative that wanted to come to the county, and that involved the, the Defense Department, and when a lot of people gave up on that idea, I know two people that went and met with them, and you were one of them, and you invited me to the meeting, and we just, you know, for what it's worth, you just have to tell people, we don't want your jets, we don't want your nose, we don't want your garbage, and our takes our forest, and...
We support the military.
We support the military 100%, but they have a lot of the room, let's leave this little part of Florida pristine, leave it alone, just let it sit there. The loudest thing we want to hear in that forest is a hound dog barking.
But, Mr. Chairman, let me ask Alan, Alan I know you're not the planner anymore, but you do have an ear for when the comp plan is, Mr. Miller is requesting that we make this part of the comprehensive plan, when the, you know, on the comp plan update is what it says, amendment to the comp plan? Can, can you speak on this a little bit?
Bobby, and I'll defer to the attorney on some of this, because the laws have changed. When the governor did away, basically did away with DCA, did away with this, with some of the legal standing of the comp plan, it's still there, it's still an ordinance that the board has. The state of Florida doesn't look at this as a, as a critical planning document anymore, so I will defer to the attorney, whether it needs to be part of the comp plan or just a self-standing ordinance, just the way he wrote it, because the comp plan itself nowadays, we don't talk about it as much, mainly because the state of Florida says, they're still legal, but we're not going to, we're not going to require you all, we have to submit amendments to the state of Florida, but that's all we do. They don't review them anymore, they don't monitor them, it's become a much less important issue for the state of Florida. So what are the best way to make this thing valid in Franklin County is what we need to focus on, because that's, that's the strength of it.
That's what I was going to say, if the board so desires to adopt an ordinance, then we need to direct the attorney to, to draft that for us, and whoever makes the motion, should, should one of the board members make a motion on this, you need to specify whether you want a 75% majority, or you want a 66 or a 60, and you also need to specify about the ballot style, the election style, which he's not wanting the mail-in ballots, he's wanting you to go to the polls or vote, so all that needs to be stipulated in the motion directing the attorney to take action.
Mr. Chairman, may I add a comment? I would request respectfully that the board not tie my hands in terms of what to look at, because it may be that I come back and say, well, this is what you told me to do, but I can't do it. I'd rather have the flexibility to come back to the board and say, these are your options, you make a decision on which one you want, if that's okay with the board, the chairman.
Okay. Y'all all right with that, Mr. Chairman? I make a motion that we direct the attorney to look at the information that Mr. Miller has presented to us, and come back with us a recommendation on what we need to do according to Mr. Miller's request on the height limit.
Second. Well, a motion for, by Commissioner Sanders, second by the rest of the board. Mr. Massey, any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions. Just to clarify, is our current height limit 43 feet? Anybody know?
I think it's 44 technically, it's 35 feet plus the, the freeboard, which is nine feet, I believe, we're total of 44, from the ground, their natural grade to the peak of the roof.
Yeah, I'm, Mr. Miller, I'm completely in support of this. I think you're all aware of that, we've spoke several times. I, I don't know that, and we might be able to, I don't know that the county could make it be a live vote versus a mail-in vote. That goes to what the state of Florida's rules would be, and I know that if, if we can do it where it's at, the petitioner's expense, it'll probably never happen, because I don't know if you've talked with me about supervised elections office, that's a lot of money when you run an election, a lot, a lot of money. And I'm not saying I'm opposed to that, I'm just...
You can't, from what I've gathered legally, you can't allow an individual to have their own election or have their own vote. What it would be, would be through a form of a fee to apply for this, as I understand it, but there's so many legal things to be worked out, and I'm not an attorney, I just know what I would like to have, you know, for my children and grandchildren to decide on later what they want their, this community to look like. I know what I'd like for it to look like now, and I know what the majority of the people I've talked to, well 100% of the people I've talked to as a matter of fact, would like for it to look like, but this is a lawyer's will, I mean the attorney will have to of course take this thing and define it and redefine it, and then bring it back to y'all.
One more question, it doesn't matter, I just want to know, sorry I'm that type of person. Anybody know how tall our courthouse is? Is it above 44 feet? Just a question.
There are structures in the county.
Exactly how high it is, but I believe it does exceed 35.
Okay. It doesn't matter, I'm just...
There are structures, there are structures in the county that are higher than, than the limit, current limit I'm sure, but this, if you notice real closer, at the very top of this thing it says is regarding the existing height regulations. You have to have in place things for water towers, you have to have places, communication towers, all that, I'm not, we're not talking about that.
You're talking about the structures.
We're not talking about the structures that are existing, they're...
Talking about building.
We're talking about...
Bobby, that's a good point, we need to make sure we have allowances for future water towers though, I mean because, because you know...
Absolutely, but you have that good in your plan now.
That's part of my motion directing Mr. Schuler, Mr. Schuler has common sense, and he can figure that out.
It's already in there, if you go by the existing height regulations, it's there, I'm sure you've allowed for that in the past. I hope you have.
Yes, it's through a various procedure, but I just want to, I don't want to block that out for non-havoc structures, you know, cell towers, water towers.
Right, right, right.
That don't have anything to do with it. He's talking the building, the building height that's far ahead, you know, like not no condos and all that.
And, and real quick Alan, every building's not going to be 44. That's always determined by famous regulations and everything else, and flood zones and everything else determines what the actual height of your building's going to be, depending on the location of it.
Right.
Is that correct? Well, you keep relating to 44 feet, so that means we don't have 35 feet height limit, but some places will, but like with Alan, we allowed an extra...
Well now we're talking about 40 over feet of grade, not 40 feet from sea level, because you're correct, you're correct, that, you know, if you live on a sand dune, you, you may have a big dune that's 20 feet tall and you can put a house on top of that, at grade, you'd be, you know, from sea level you'd be 20 plus 30, 55 feet, so we're talking about the height of a structure above grade is what we're talking about. Okay. I will tell you, Commissioner, there are places in the county where, over in Alamo Point, in the eastern end of the county, where you have floods, flood zones that do have 15 to 17 feet of elevation requirements above sea level, and we still allow people, this is what we need to think through this, we're not trying to make any houses any larger than where they are, but you're, it's certainly possible where there are places in the eastern end of the county, maybe on St. George Island, but it's mostly eastern, where you have flood surges, storm, you know, your, your flood insurance maps show 15 to 17 feet of elevation above sea level, and it's possible that your house would start 10 or 12 feet above grade because it's really low, and I just need to look at, look at that aspect of it. We're not trying to make houses any bigger Bobby, but we want to keep consistent with what we've allowed in the past. Let me just say, there's something, I think our numbers are off, and I'm not trying to propose any increase, that our current regulations I believe are nine feet of clearance below a house and 35 feet from the first floor, but you have a space there that constitutes the first floor, being the girders and the floor structure, so I really think our height limitation currently is 47 feet. I think, I think we're missing those three feet in there where you, where you have your floor girders, because when you count 35 feet is from the, is where you stand, and below that then you have, you have what's your houses, you know, your floor girders and all that kind of stuff, which I think we get people up to three feet on, and then below that you have nine feet of clearance so you can park a car under. So I think our true height is 47 feet.
Well I was going to say...
In certain places, yeah.
Right, right.
In certain places. That's a, that's a other topic I was going to say for another day, but since it came up today, one thing you're going to have to watch, I mean you have people coming in and putting in 15 feet of field dirt and then building on top of that, I mean what are you going to do if somebody comes in and puts 40 feet of field dirt in, is there any logic in that?
Yes there is.
That's going to...
You can't alter your natural grade in a frame of flood zone.
Okay, okay.
Well and that's what I, I was thinking to say, Mr. Chairman if you don't mind, I was thinking to say, we have a lot, a lot of unbuildable lots here in Franklin County, and they need to be realized that they are unbuildable. You know what I'm saying?
On the mark.
And that's, I'm just saying that because you have a lot of people that come in here and, and expect to put the 15 footer, you know, fill on, on it and then do that. You can't do it, that alters the flow of the water, that alters us all the way down the line, when you have storms come in, is, we're made, the way we're made to take care of things like that, if we just leave it alone.
That's correct.
And I've been trying to say this.
We have safeguards already in place.
Yeah.
And we're going to honor those safeguards when I change those, let's go.
We got an airport that, what about the hangars and stuff?
I don't think the hangar's more than 45, I think, we didn't issue any barriers, I'm pretty sure that they, that they're below the ceiling. I mean we, the last one was built, 10,000 square of a hangar, I mean I suppose it's possibly, you got a 100,000 square foot hangar, you might have a bigger building, but again those are, those aren't necessarily havoc structures, he's talking, he's talking about buildings that people live in and occupy all the time, so we just need to allow that, yes, that's a good point.
But I, the reason I say that, maybe we get a government funding, they might require...
They might, and the big, and I don't know that how, how high a hangar that takes a jet, you know, how high it has to be.
You know, basically it's up to the attorney to figure out, we're talking about how, you know...
Right, things that we are living in.
People live in or rent or lease, I think he understands fully the thrust of what I'm trying to accomplish here.
We're going to have a motion to say we need a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? A motion carries?
This will go to public hearings and we'll have the, the teeth of law in it and before we get through with it, right?
At least two votes.
Two public hearings, so if any... Two public hearings, so if anyone wants to...